I'd like to call the Cumberland School Committee meeting to order at 7:35 PM and ask you to rise for the pledge.
(inaudible)
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Pleasure of the committee? Motion by Mr. Mutter, second by Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Next item on the agenda is the student government report, student activities. Do we have someone here from student government? Good evening.
My name is Eden Duhamel and I am student government secretary, a senior here at Cumberland High School. Last month, in the month of November, we ran the program, our annual program called Turkey Baskets, where we provide local families with a meal for Thanksgiving. We delivered, on November 26th, we delivered 150 baskets to the monastery and five baskets were sent to Cumberland High School families. 150 turkeys were collected along with boxes of bread and baked goods. This year, we really saw our school come together to help the less fortunate in our community more than ever. We also had the ring ceremony last month, on Tuesday, November 21st, for the juniors. The ceremony went well and all rings were received or distributed on the next day. This is the first time we ever had the ring ceremony during the school day and it went very well.
Hi, I'm Jacob Naution. I'm the sophomore president of Cumberland High School. And in the month of December, from December 2nd to December 19th, we've been running the Adopt a Family Program, which gives less fortunate families a chance to have Christmas. Four families have been adopted locally, two from Cumberland High and two from BF Norton. We are trying to make their Christmas merry. We have also added multiple wreaths of giving, which consists of a wreath with a tag on it, which faculty and staff, other students, and community members may pick from to contribute gifts to families in need. And also on December 18th, there will be a student government meeting to wrap presents for the Adopt a Family Program, as well as discuss winter ball.
That is all. Thank you.
Nice job on the family baskets. Appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, approval of minutes from regular meeting, 11:14, 2013, special meeting, 11:20, approval of minutes of executive session from 11:14, executive session 11:20, the enrollment report from 12:01, truancy residency report from 12:01, school police report from 11:01, and a resolution, SCR 2013-19, Wireless Classroom Initiative. Pleasure of the committee? Motion by Mr. DeMonica, second by Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries seven zero to approve the consent agenda. Next item is a report out of the executive session meeting from 12:12, 2013, a report out of votes. Item two, Jade Doe, on a seven-zero vote, the committee upheld the superintendent's recommendation to place student Doe at the Revival Collaborative for the remainder of the school year. Next item is CTA employee disciplinary hearing for teacher A. On a five-to-one vote, the committee approved a one-day suspension and a letter of reprimand in the teacher's files that should be drafted by our legal counsel. Next item is for teacher B, CTA employee disciplinary hearing. On a seven-zero vote, the committee upheld the superintendent's recommendation for disciplinary action. I need a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Motion by Mr. Mutter, second by Mr. Salvatore, Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Next item, recognition of achievement. Dr. Thornton.
(inaudible) please come up. First recognition. For the new award in Cumberland, starting this year, we have the Support Professional of the Year. Before we start talking about this individual, if I have a book that can kind of have her here with us, Susan McLaren.
Good evening, everyone. It is with great pleasure that I present Mrs. McLaren as the first Cumberland School Department Educated Support Professional of the Year. As we all read the Valley Breeze, Petucket Times, and Watsacker Call, Mrs. McLaren's work ethic and accomplishments are extremely noteworthy. It is her, the person, that is what this award really acknowledges. She just absolutely enjoys coming to school, instantly develops relationships with all faculty, staff, family, community members, and more importantly, her students. She spoke to me about running into one of her former students who was walking with his father this week and stopped to appreciate her for everything she has done for not only her son, but also for him and his relationship with his son. It is stories like these that, as a principal, make me appreciate the value of people we have in our school, like Mrs. McLaren. It is fitting that she is the first ESP of the year for Cumberland, as she has set a high standard for herself, as well as for others, that has elevated the respect that paraprofessionals deserve in this district. Mrs. McLaren, we thank you for you and your service to this community.
Susan, first, we have a plaque for Susan, and we have the Cumberland School Department, 2013 District Education Support Professional of the Year presented to Susan McLaren for recognition of your inspirational actions and excellence in educational support.
Thank you.[418.13][418.13](applause)
Let's go ahead and put it up in the district conference location. She is the first one on this yearly, yearly plaque. And also, Susan, we have to do a walk as well.
Thank you so much.
And next, Dr. Caldwell.
Tonight, you're also recognizing two of our school counselors, Cindy Lancaster and Carrie Carlson, who are both school guidance counselors at the McCourt Middle School. It's a big night for McCourt. Mrs. Carlson and Mrs. Lancaster were awarded an Oscar Award, not to be confused with what goes on in TV and movies, but they were awarded the Oscar Award, which stands for the Ocean State School Counselor Accountability Report. And what Mrs. Carlson and Mrs. Lancaster did was they applied through their Nash of the Rhode Island School Counselors Association. And the award is given to counseling programs that have been developed to collaborate and implement interventions which support a positive, safe learning environment and promote student achievement. They were able to demonstrate through collecting, analyzing, and presenting data to show the positive impact of developing a comprehensive school counseling curriculum. They were also recognized at their fall Rhode Island School Counselors Association Conference in October, and we thought it would be fitting for you to also acknowledge them and their hard work. So, on behalf of the school department, we want to acknowledge Mrs. Lancaster and Mrs. Carlson.[527.41][527.41](applause)
Here's your Oscar.
Thank you so much.
In our honorable mission, I have pretended to backroom here to see actually an award.
Good evening, honorable school committee. It's a pleasure to be here before you tonight. I just wanted to mention that yesterday at the State House, both the Cleff Singers and McCourt and North Cumberland Middle School came and entertained us at the State House. They did such a wonderful job, and all of Cumberland should be very proud of them. But without much ado, I would like to ask Kathy Farrell, the president of the PTO, to please come up for a moment.
In recognition of the fact that we work really hard in our schools to promote positive behaviors and there's a lot of programming involved in that, and of course, there is a cost attached to that, and I know the PTO has worked really hard in their efforts to raise money for these various programs. So to help with that effort, on behalf of the state and the House of Representatives, I'd like to present this grant check to you for the Cumberland, for the PTO. And hopefully that will help with the cost of doing all your programming.
Okay, the last item is wireless under my section just a little bit on the wireless grant. I can tell you, since last we met, we have signed off on the grant and we have the funds. We're in the process now of recommending the vendor on the official agreement and purchasing. We're hoping to start installing during Christmas break. So we're well on our way.
Super. Thank you. Just a follow-up question to that, Dr. Thornton. What do you think will be the first series of activities once we're wireless? Do we have any idea? Oh, part test, huh? Never mind. All right, next item is the Chairperson's Report, and the item agenda is the High School Grading Guidelines. We, as many are aware of, there was a letter to the editor in the Valley Breeze, and what it highlighted is the activities that the school district has undertaken over the last number of years to give you a perspective. And, you know, there's been, A, the voters, as we all know, voted to improve the high school. And if anyone ever wants to take a walk through memory lane on the deplorable conditions of the high school, I'm happy to do that with you prior to the renovation of the Phase Three activities and the other CHS 2010 activities. They're really key to kind of setting the stage for beginning to create a better environment for learning for kids. Then we also talk a little bit about leadership, and as you're all aware, we've had some significant leadership changes in our district. And for anyone who has had to undertake that exercise, it is, it requires a lot of fortitude. And it's not easy to make change, especially when folks may not want to. It's not easy to make change when you're not, you're not the superintendent, you're the school board, but you know there needs to be some momentum for this district. We also know that within our school, we have to provide them with high-quality instruction. And part of that is hiring the leaders to help align that high-quality instruction for teachers and to support teachers. So what we hear right now is more teachers saying, and I'll use my anecdotal statements that teachers have shared with me, "This is the best year I've ever had here. I feel supported. This is moving in the right direction." And I don't think these statements are made because of, you know, a relationship I may have with a faculty member. I think they're genuine and they're unprovoked, so I'm not pulling information how you like it. Is it better? No, it's unsolicited. So I think that we know in this alignment that we're trying to do and navigate it for the district, that that feedback for us is very validating. We also know that part of the instruction is being brutally honest with ourselves as to where we are with our assessment. And part of the first exercises with Dr. Thornton's arrival, we restructured the subcommittees of the school committee to, A, not have committee members out seven nights a week, which was often the case, or have them straddling three or four different meetings. It was very focused and deliberate. We have finance, we have achievement, and we have policy. Those are our big charges. With Dr. Thornton, we went through a whole series of exercises with the high school where, while you might have called it dog and pony shows, we really felt that we had some major concerns. Why weren't scores where they were? We heard, you know, a lot of rumor and innuendo about a specific department was or wasn't performing the way they should be. And that opportunity, that was fully public, gave us the chance to ask some pretty difficult questions about programs. It also gave Dr. Thornton an opportunity, his first introduction with the committee as to what was, what we felt was the strengths of our program and maybe some weakness areas of our program. Sorry about that. We also know that during the course of the last year, we've restructured our high school leadership model, and that was done with good purpose and belief that we needed assistant principals to support the behavior, sorry, the dean of students to support the behaviors of students, both positive and negative. And I know the PTO's done a great job of trying to bring engagement programs in for students so that they can feel like they're welcome in our schools. In addition, the high school assistant principals now are very data-driven and data-focused, and I think that's part of what we're going to hear a little bit about tonight. And we also changed our instructional leadership from, I always say the wrong thing, it's inter-curricular coordinators.
Inter-disciplinary.
Thank you. I always say intergalactic coordinator, and I know, I know that's not right, but Mr. Prignano will put that little bug in my head if I can't shake it. But their role is really to integrate our program so that we can have this cross-working of our instructions so that math doesn't sit in a silo any longer and science never connects to math, because anyone with a science background knows that math is essential to that. And so we know that that work, while still in its infancy state for the district, is really where we need to go. So, in summary, we've changed a lot in a small amount of time. We've placed resources into materials that we know were neglected for a number of years. We're bringing the technology initiative onboard. And one of the areas we felt passionate about was in the area of grading, because we did feel that there was, our grades didn't accurately represent what students knew. And if you dig a little deeper, I think that that's a pretty on-spot statement. And part of this exercise is to align our work so that students have a solid understanding. And in fact, talking with someone recently about AP scores and how well we do or how well we don't do in our district, we definitely can do a lot better. And so when students go in and get an A or a B in an AP class and failed the AP, and of course exam administered by the college board, that's a problem. And so what we're looking to do is have some solutions around areas like that. So I'm assuming you're all here for, to talk a little bit about the grading policy, and I don't have any new information other than what was in the paper. Aside to say that we'll continue with the review of grading in achievements, we'll recalibrate the schedule that we had. In addition, we have a communications person coming onboard to help us in the district. That, I think, will help us to streamline some of the work. When we did meet with that individual, he has strong experience with school districts, so I think that that's going to bring value and streamline some of the communications needs that we have. So, in short, in case you haven't read the paper, we will maintain the present scale, so the A+, A-, and the numerics as they are applicable. So that part doesn't change from where it presently is. We will maintain passing grades as they are presently understood to be a C-, or a 70. We will designate proficiency and add a grade at B-, or 80. In addition to your course grade, report cards will include proficiency levels achieved for each learning target, and we know that Principal Tenrero will be working to develop that over time during the course of the year. I don't have a timeline, so if we're rethinking on the delivery of, do we start at grade nine? But I don't, I don't think that that's the situation. But we will, we will definitely talk about that a bit more in achievements. In addition, so I don't get too off-track, transcripts will include a grade for each course, as well as the overall proficiency level for that course. I think we will, sorry, as you're all aware, we're working to align our coursework to Common Core. It is a more rigorous set of standards than Rhode Island's standards. It will take us some time to do that, but given our new leadership, we know we've hired the right team to get us there. We will continue to align coursework to targets. We will develop and publish exemplars for high-quality student work. We will continue to communicate, we will identify and communicate clear and consistent sets of learning targets that enable students to succeed, and redesign the report cards to more accurately reflect your students' mastery of key learning targets and his or her learner qualities. In short, we've had a lot of criticism over the last few years about, prior few years during this change, about we invest so much money into your educational program, but are we getting the results? And that could be from someone who just rails against schools in general, from taxpayer dollars, to someone who's a parent and is just not genuinely satisfied with the program. So our role here is to really raise the bar for students. We think that the decision that we're, that we described today is the right one for our kids, and we do think, you know, in the end, we've got great leadership to produce great results for our kids. So, thank you. I apologize for all the language that's bad. Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. Good evening.
Hi, I hope that I made a big enough impression that you remember me and my speech from last time, but if not, I am a sixth grader at North Cumberland Middle School. I'm here tonight because I want to be, not because my mom is making me, but because I feel that my grades are important to me, and I think that you should know about how hard it is to interpret the meanings on my rubrics, or at least on an occasion that I get one. For example, in one of my classes, I will ask the teacher for a rubric when we are taking a test or quiz, and she'll pretty much always say one of two things. Those two things are either, "I have no rubrics for you guys, just answer the questions for what you think is a four," or she will say, "I don't have any rubrics available for you, so I'm not making copies, so share this one that I leave on the table in the back of the room." Though the table is so crowded the whole time the test is going on that I can't concentrate and don't even bother wasting my time trying to catch a quick glimpse of it. I can barely understand the rubric to begin with, so there's no point trying to get to the table to see the one copy of it and waste test time. The only rubric we received in that class this year wasn't possible to understand because it used phrases such as, "There is an insightful above-grade level analysis," and an explanation for each detail. What does above-grade level even mean? What is on-grade level even mean? And what is below-grade level? Aren't even any examples or simple explanations of things like that? How am I supposed to get this impossible form if the rubrics are making it even harder? In conclusion, I think that for the benefit of all of us students, you should reconsider your decision about using standard-based grading because it is affecting students in more ways than you could ever imagine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.[1385.41][1385.41](applause)
My name is Colleen Emmes Webb. I'm a freshman at CHS. I do not like standard-based grading at all. I've been up here to speak once before, and I am here again. I'll keep coming to talk as many times as it takes to get this changed. I'm here because I want to be. My mom didn't make me. I'm going to college in three years, and I know that every grade from here on out counts. I want to get into a very good college, and I'm afraid standard-based grading is preventing me from reaching my full potential. I feel this year I'm not getting as good grades as last year. I know that high school is supposed to be more challenging than middle school, but I think standard-based grading doesn't help students do well. Many of my classes use the rubrics with four, three, two, one. It holds back the higher students from doing as well as they could with normal grading. An example of this is on one of my physics rubrics. In order to get a four on a graphing assessment, the student needed to be perfect. The exact wording for all four of the criteria is, "In addition to level-three performance, no errors." This is very hard to achieve. We're all human and all make mistakes. That's just part of life. It's not fair, it's not fair to not let a student get a very good grade if they make one little mistake. I got one red mark on this assignment, so I got two threes and two fours. My final grade was a three-plus. Why did I get two threes when I only made one mistake? It's very difficult for a student to be absolutely perfect. This is pretty much saying that in order to get fours, students need to be perfect all the time. It is also hard to achieve a four on some English rubrics I have. For some of the criteria, it says, "In addition to the performance score of three, the student demonstrates applications that extend beyond helpless talk." How am I supposed to include something in paper that I didn't learn? We students don't know what to include because it's supposed to be something we didn't learn. If we don't know how to interpret the wording and include specific requirements, how are we supposed to know what to do to get a four? Clearly, students don't understand what the rubrics want, and when they do, it's difficult to achieve that beyond the standard level. As I will begin to think about college in just a couple of years, I want to be able to wow the colleges with my grades. I want to be able to choose a top school and get into it. If standard-based grading continues, it will bring down my grades. I don't want this to jeopardize my future in education. Please reconsider your decision of standard-based grading and the use of four, three, two, one on all rubrics. Thank you.[1525.82][1525.82](applause)
Hello, my name is Laura Arlo, and I'm a parent of two children, the Cumberland School District, a sixth grader and a fourth grader. Last January, I attended a meeting here at CHS on standard-based grading and college admissions. I was hoping that by attending this meeting and panel discussion, which included several conundrum college admissions officers, that I would walk away with my questions answered. Unfortunately, although there appear to be some positive aspects to SPG, my initial concerns remain and have actually grown over the last 11 months. These concerns revolve around the fact that four levels of achievement do not allow for any differentiation in grading of assignments that used to range from a low 80 to a high 90. There's a very large difference between getting a 98 and an 84, and if you can't recognize that, I think you really should sit down and discuss this a little further. I realize that SPG is different than letter-based grading. Whether it's an apple or an orange, a question on a test is either right, wrong, or somewhere in between. The standard grading scale for college admissions is based on the 4.0 grading scale. And this is with an emphasis on unweighted grades in college prep classes. Okay? A 4.0 is an A, a 3.7 is an A-, a 3.3 is a P+, and a 3.0 is B. I've looked into standard-based grading, and from district to district, it varies. Some people say a three is a 92, some people say a three is a B. Although this is a national trend, it is not consistent and it is not standard. Okay. Standard-based grading is an achievement level and not a grade. So calculating a meaningful GPA based on a traditional 4.0 system is impossible. The national, according to the National Association of College Admissions Counseling in 2011, grades in college preparatory courses is listed, was listed as the number-one factor in the college admissions process. Eighty-three point four percent of colleges state that grades in college prep courses are of considerable importance. In comparison, 59.3% say admission test scores or SAT scores are important. With standard-based grading, you're eliminating the grades in college preparatory classes and you are basing admissions on a holistic approach that is not used by all colleges and universities, and you're placing an inordinate amount of weight on the SAT score. I'm very nervous about this because I actually have two kids in the system, and this is very emotional for me. There are many ways to improve school performance without eliminating letter-based grading, many of which are currently being done by the school administration and teachers. Students have been through several years of construction at the high school and change regarding student behavior and achievement. I feel it would be a shame not to see more students from Cumberland attending elite and semi-elite colleges and universities because of a new grading system that will make many students' academic performance appear lackluster and mediocre. I can't believe that a 3.0 from a standard-based grading system would at all compare to a 3.8. No matter what the standards are, you can have high standards with a letter-based grading system, and there are many high schools across the country that have high standards and traditional grades. There are tens of students at CHS who currently score above 600s on the SAT, over 10% of the 2012 class, and many, many more who score in the 500s. I know that Cumberland School District wants higher standardized test scores, but eliminating traditional letter-based grading is not the answer. But the district is on the way to improve But the district is on the way to improve the academic performance, which I believe could be done with less emphasis being placed on eliminating traditional grades. Non-academic factors can be eliminated from going into calculating a course grade without eliminating the grades themselves. Retakes for tests below eighty can be offered at the discretion of the teacher. Later grades at the end of the semester can be weighted more heavily for students who struggle but show progress. The strengths of performing to a high standard can be incorporated easily into a letter-based So I appreciate the chance to speak tonight, and I apologize for being so emotional, but this is my children's future, and I feel like, as a parent, I have a responsibility to look out for them, especially when they're only nine and twelve. And if I see something that I feel is inappropriate or will hurt them in the long run, I feel the need to speak. I look forward to seeing continued improvement related to student GPAs. The median GPA at the high school is very low, and it should be above 3.0. Standardized test scores, SAT and ACT, as well as continued increase in the students attending high-quality colleges and universities. However, I don't believe that taking away the children's grades is the answer, and in fact, I think that it's very inappropriate to take away high-performer students' grades to try to solve the problems that you have in this school district from low performers. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Emmesvek. I just actually have a couple of questions about the article in the Valley Breeze. I'm just wondering if you could clarify a couple of things. First of all, just from what you've said earlier, has this been voted on, or is this a change that has to be voted on because it is a policy change? It just kind of sounded like it's already been decided, or is it going to be a vote from the school committee?
It would be a vote from the school committee.
Will be a vote, okay. I think when you, when you're talking about the grades, the grading guidelines, if this is what you're referring to, the document, the, the number ranges and the, and the letters, like the-
So the grading scale, as it is in effect in the high school with letters and numerics, not standard-based reporting, will be maintained. So there seems to be maybe some confusion, so perhaps I wasn't specific enough. It will be traditional grades.
Now, do you mean maintained on the report card only, or maintained throughout all grading within the class?
I think we need to discuss that further. I think there's a, certainly my perspective, that there is a need to have some understanding of when students are proficient in their coursework. If there's going to be a grade that could be a four, three, two, one, I think that's really up to the administration to bring that forward to us. And I also want to clarify that rubrics can be used in a standard-based environment and in a traditional, by-the-book, traditional graded environment. So there seems to be this confusion that standard-based grading has evolved the rubrics. Rubrics have been in place in the district for a number of years. So it's, well, right now, they may be aligned to a, a standard-based grade. The rubrics themselves could be a traditional letter grade. So-
Okay. And I do understand that rubrics have been used for quite some time, however, the way they're being used now is, is very different than I understand they've been used in the past.
But I don't, I don't know that either one of us can say that with specificity. So you may have your experience, and, but I, I don't think we can say that as-
Well, I guess one of my concerns is, right now, what we're doing at the high school is we are grading, the report cards are showing traditional grades, traditional letter grades.
Correct.
However, within each class, the teachers are using standard-based grades on all of the rubrics. And as you know, I brought examples here before where the, where they're all over the place with the grades. Fours, threes, twos, they're averaging, they're not. There's no consistency at all. So if that's going to continue, that's a biggest concern of mine, because that's not going to solve any problems until the, the issues with the rubrics are resolved.
I understand.
Madam Chair-
Yes.
I hate to jump in, given I'm not on the school committee, but as the council, this is public comment, and so I, I, just so everybody's aware, I'm not looking to chill anything, believe me, but this is a meeting that's open to the public, not a public meeting. There may be various opportunities for folks to have conversations with members of the school committee, and I just would caution that if it hasn't been agended, comments can be made, and that's exactly the purpose of a meeting that's open to the public, so that everybody can make their comments for the school committee or whatever public body they're going in front of. But if it hasn't been agended to be discussed, it's a little dicey to have a conversation that could end up in a discussion that hasn't been noticed. I just would caution the school committee and the chair in that regard.
Thank you for the reminder. Okay. I, I just thought that this was on the agenda tonight, that's why I'm, I'm just asking for some clarification on the article that was in the Valley Breeze that Mrs. Bolio just spoke about. There, there wasn't, there weren't a lot of details, which is why I'm just asking these questions now.
I'm not looking to chill the discussion. I think if she mentioned the Valley Breeze, that's fine. It's not like she's opening up the door to cross-examination, though. If, if, if the commission, if the chairperson gave a chairperson's report, that's up to the chairperson to give, if that's what you're referring to. She gave one, and, but that doesn't mean that this issue's on the agenda.
So I'll end with this. The, we do know that they will be recalibrating the delivery schedule for us, and that will occur in achievements up. We also know that there will be policy changes brought forward. So those two activities will occur, and as I stated in the article, it would be my recommendation to continue with the traditional grading.
Madam Chair, just so I'm clear, I'm not, I'm not trying, believe me, my role is not trying to stop anybody from talking. This is a meeting that's open to the public, so your public comment is welcomed by the school committee on any topic, but the school committee doesn't necessarily have to engage in a discussion of the topic as a school committee, because this is their meeting to run through their business, which includes items that have nothing to do with the matter that any person may come up and speak about. They have lots of matters that they need to address, and this is the forum for them to do it in an open meeting, if that makes any sense. I hope it does, and if it doesn't, I'm not trying to be oblique.
I guess I just misunderstood you at the, one of the prior meetings I had, that I had attended. I thought I understood that if it was on the agenda, the school committee could respond back, which is why I was asking those questions, but I guess it sounds like I should attend the subcommittee meeting to actually converse. Is that, do I understand that?
The school committee is, can do whatever it wants when it's on the agenda. They don't have to. I wasn't aware that the, every issue that was being discussed was on the agenda. If I'm mistaken in that regard, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. This is public comment, so it's a comment, not so much a Q and A, but if I can clarify it, I will.
My name is Will Emmesvek, and I'm a parent of a number of students in the Cumberland School System. But I was handed a note by a young man named Ty Girard, who's a ninth grader, and he asked me to read some remarks to you, a number of thoughts, tonight, that he wasn't able to stay and present himself. So when he says, or when I say "I," that actually means a ninth grader, not me. He's got a number of bulleted points, so I'll just read them as he gave them to me. The first one is, "In science classes, four categories on a test. Each part of the four involves a higher level of thinking. You only need to get a certain amount correct to pass that part. So you start with fifty points, and then when you pass part one, you obtain sixty-five, and every time that you pass a section, your grade increases by ten points. If you pass every part, you get a ninety-five. If you're perfect, you'll get a hundred. If you make one mistake, you get the ninety-five. And a person who makes multiple mistakes across all the sections but passes all of them will get the same grade as the student who had a perfect score. If an effort of standard-based grading is an effort to bring lower-scoring students up to improve their overall grades, and unwanted consequence, is a kid who makes mistakes obtains the same grade as one who makes many mistakes, or none conceivably, depending on where they fall in the scale." He says, "In some classes where there's a rubric on a test, the lowest grade that you obtain on that rubric will be the final grade. If you get all fours and a single two, you get two," which he finds disappointing and upsetting. "It encourages students not to try as hard as they might otherwise. A hard, homework is not always a grade. Not many people do the homework," he reports. "Teachers are supposed to encourage kids, and he is told that a three is great, but it's the same grade as everyone else." And I know from experience, he's a very high-achieving, hard-working young man, so he finds this discouraging. He knows that it's risking people's futures. Everyone looks the same on college applications, when there's this loss of granularity due to the one, two, three, four grading system. Colleges may overlook, if multiple people from the same school apply, they may become more familiar with the system, which is something that was explained to me by admissions officer who reads both Ivy and D3 applications in Providence. But Tyler says that everybody is in just four categories, and there's no, no actual grade in the specific GPA. He makes a point that it's, you can't accurately judge intelligence because it's just as easy to get a three as it is to get a score poorly or very well and fall in a, sort of, rather a broad range. And he concludes, "In English, a three is considered a good grade, but to obtain a three in spelling and grammar, you have to have a perfect grammar. It's impossible to exceed the standard." And he repeats that that lowest grade is going to be your grade, so, because it can never, never be the three, he can't achieve a four, no matter how original his thinking, his insights, or how hard he works. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Molly Mowry, and I'm an interpreter at Cumberland High School. And I think that Cumberland High School is a great learning environment, and our teachers are always motivating us to do the best that we can do. However, the new grading policy makes the best that we can do only a ninety-five most of the time, and the flaw that I find is that there's a significant difference between a ninety-three and a ninety-seven, but both are rounded to a ninety-five. Some students strive to do the best that they can do, and others only try to get the four. I'm a student that strives for the best, so it upsets me when I get a ninety-five versus a one-hundred. And other schools that don't use standard-based grading give out one-hundreds, and that boosts GPA up. It concerns me that I will not be accepted into a college because they'll take somebody else that has a higher GPA because their school gets out one-hundreds. I understand that the grading system is trying to help, like, lower average students get to the higher grade, but I just want to do the best that I can do all the time, and I'm afraid that the grading system is going to enable that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Megan Spillen, and I'm a sophomore at Cumberland High School. Another year, another change it seemed to us. This year, we have two new deans and two new assistant principals, and also we have more changes to the grading policy. While changes aren't always bad, they're not always good either. And I feel as though the grading system negatively affects students who, of the higher level. And last year, I came to a meeting here with my mom about the grading system, and it seemed like most of the focus moved on raising test scores. And while the grading policy helps people who may achieve, oh, I mean, who achieve lower grades, it hurts students who had high grades in the first place. As Molly said before, someone who gets a ninety-two on a test, and like, if you do points-wise, get to ninety-two, and someone who gets a ninety-eight, they would round to the same grade of a ninety-five, when obviously the person with a ninety-eight performed better. And another note about the grading system is that I found that there are many inconsistencies among teachers, because, like you said before, it's kind of changed a lot over a short period of time. So some of them follow the grading policy, and some of them don't, so like, it's hard to get a good grade throughout teachers. And I agree that with some things, standard-based grading makes sense, like English essays. You kind of achieve the standard, and I don't know if your writing is just above what your grade level should be. That makes sense. But things where, like in math and science, where the answer's kind of either right or wrong, like, it's either two or not, like, that, that shouldn't be picked above whether you get a one-hundred or not, or a ninety-five. And another note is about college. I'm only a sophomore, but I kind of have like a plan. I kind of want to go to like an Ivy League school, and even though, like, they send a summary of your grading system to the colleges, I feel like it kind of creates a gray area for colleges, because they don't really know if you're that ninety-eight kid or if you're that ninety-two kid. It just kind of makes it a gray area, because you're all that ninety-five. And so although, like, the gray area can help the people who have the ninety-two, it hurts people who have the ninety-eight, and I hope you consider my concerns and reconsider your decision.
Hi, my name is Bruce Ganek. My daughter is in the middle school, it's not the high school, so it's a little different, but we're involved with the standardized grading, standard-based grading as well. And I kind of waited to see how this was all going to work, because I understand where you're trying to get to, and said, "We'll just, let's see how it's implemented and what happens." I know there's been concerns that parents are looking at numbers, and that's the most important thing, and it isn't from my end. But I'm very concerned in what I've already seen happening, and it is not a slam on the teachers. I think what they're doing is right, given the system they have. I have no problem with the Commonwealth, I think it's good. But standard-based grading that we, it started to be implemented now in some of the classes, is, is de-incendicizing the top students from doing well. For example, one of the things that's come up is, in a subject, she was given a bunch of things to study for the test, and then there was extra credit stuff to do. And I watched her blow off the extra credit, and that's not her. I said, "Why are you not even studying this?" And she said, "Because I need to hit the standard. I need to get all of it right on this, or else the extra credit won't matter. This is the part I need to hit the standard, and if I get that, then I can go ahead and see what else is going on compared to, like math, for example, that's not the subject. Here's twenty questions, here's five hard ones. If you miss one of the easy ones, you get the hard one. You're averaging out. It's worth doing." So what I've been seeing from the middle school is, they, because the standard means you got to be perfect first, they're not bothering to go after that extra credit because it's riskably worth it. You can't hit it unless you're absolutely perfect on the thing, and it's just, it's not going to balance. The second thing, and I'm not sure how this was supposed to happen, for the kids with a numeric score, if there's two tests left in the quarter, they got an eighty-eight, let's say. They know if they do well on the last two tests, they can get the A. There's a reason to continue on. My understanding with standards grading is come in October, if they've got a run of threes, they can't get a four, because at that point, the last two exams, even if they exceed the standard on that thing, because it's not an average, they're still going to be at a three. The last test doesn't change the entire grade. And what I've seen already is, the kids are working hard because there's a number scale, because they know how close are they to the next level. And I know one of the arguments that came was, when you go for a blood test, and oh, you don't get a single letter grade, you need to know what's going on, and I understand that. But even on that kind of analogy, when I get my blood test, those other levels, they don't just say, "I met the standard," or "I didn't." They give me a number to know, "How close am I to get to the next thing?" And we've lost that with standardized grading at this point. All I know is, my daughter comes home and says, "I hit the standard," or "I exceeded the standard." That's great, but is, did she hit the standard by her teeth? Did you barely make it? Or is she all the way up at the top, and it's worth pushing forward? So I'm hoping we go back, even in the middle school, to numbers, because without it, as parents and as kids, we don't know where they really are, except they either hit it or they didn't. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is Report of Standing Committee's Payment of Bills Chairman Mutter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This past Tuesday evening, the fiscal management committee in Indianapolis voted to approve payment bills of the amount of $1,657,827.83 in the past sixty-six.
Mr. Mutter moves passage of the payment of bills. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Fiorello. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries seven zero. That motion carries seven zero. Next item is Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This manager met Tuesday, December 10, 2013. As I just discussed, we approved the payment of bills. We discussed the spec sheet report. We also acted on SCR 2013-19, which was on the consent of general awareness classroom initiative that was passed in a special meeting. But there was a fiscal resolution at the time. And we did discuss the... And voted to approve the communications coordinator agreement that is on the docket later this evening. There was further discussion on the... The Cumberland Hill Elementary School concrete project, the McCourt Middle School parking lot. And we also discussed the date of a special education discussion that we had spoken to months ago. And that discussion will be taking place on January 7. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mutter. Next item is Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update. Mrs. Steel.
Thank you. Policy and Procedures met Tuesday, December 12. We discussed about nine of the policies, some of which are the next part of the agenda. In addition, we talked about... We talked about JHCCC, the Crisis Management Policy. Dr. Masters presented a new policy, Crisis Management. He was hoping to wait for Rhode Island to come out with some of our official guidance, but they haven't, so he has to come upon himself to work with Officer Fay and the District Safety Committee to draft a set of a policy to deal with a variety of crises that unfortunately, in times schools are facing these days. We will continue the discussion on that policy in January and hope to bring a cloud policy either late January or early February. We will also be discussing JFA Student Process and JGD Student Management Policy probably in later January. We're actually waiting for Mr. Adams to provide some guidance. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Achievement and Communications Subcommittee Update. We met on Tuesday and we had the opportunity to meet with Mrs. Marcela... Mr. Mitchell was her name? Mrs. Marcela from Brown University. I apologize if I don't...
Dr. Marcel Thompson.
Thank you. Who came to speak with the Subcommittee about the opportunity to pursue a STEM discussion with faculty at the high school. There is a Superfund site in Cumberland that Brown does a lot of work with and there's a strong interest in partnering with the school community to develop enriched programs. We talked a little bit about some of the opportunities it would provide related to STEAM, which is the integration of art into science, technology, and math. And so we're going to work on that as an initial project. And then to follow up with that, the faculty at the high school are going to meet with the good doctor from Brown to identify ways in which we can create coursework that better supports STEM. And they talked initially about creating a single class that's environmental, science-based, and that they can review some of the activities that are as part of the Superfund site. It also provides service learning opportunities that they'll be exploring as well, which gives students a chance to learn more about the activities and not doing Superfund cleanup by any stretch. They would not be on-site, so that was important for her to clarify with us. And in addition, they do have a large faculty at Brown that does have a strong interest in sharing their information with the community so we can create that type of colloquial partnership with them. So there are four really good items that they'll be bringing back to us, two achievements up in the matter of a few months. And as we said, we will be refining the implementation schedule for standardized grading at the high school. Next item is New Business, Ride School Safety and Emergency Response Plans Update.
Give Dr. Masterson a brief update. Good to get. So the Department of Education, as well as the State House, had passed a new law stating, obviously based on the tragedy in your town, new legislation around school safety. I'd like to report that Cumberland is nicely suited as opposed to the other districts around the state, and we are the envy of other districts. We have a District Safety Committee that meets regularly, every other month, which has a diverse representation of education and municipal safety with the police, fire, EMS. And we'll also be adding two of our school committee members to our group starting in our next meeting, February. Each school has their procedures in place, which have maintained from last year, which do meet the regulation. But we are looking to improve our procedures to exceed the regulations as of next year. We'll begin, we've drafted new procedures that will be brought to the committee at our next monthly meeting. The training will begin in the spring in preparations for the September roll-out. And we do appreciate the support that we have recently received from the school committee, the town council, the mayor's office, as well as central office in the significant amount of money that we're investing in the infrastructure of our schools around safety. I'm available for any questions.
Questions for Dr. Masters. Just a quick question. You had stated in the beginning of your remarks that we are kind of a model. What makes us a model?
There are other districts do not have a committee that meets regularly, as well as with a broad representation. So when we have issues that we need to work out internally, we call a meeting amongst the entire safety committee of the district and we work those out. Communication is extremely strong across all departments and agencies, which isn't necessarily the case in other districts. There seems to be a lot of separate work being done where we do it all together.
Understood. Thank you. Anyone else? All set. Thank you, Dr. Masters. Next item, Review of High School Level Data.
I can start things off by turning over to high school folks. I know at the school level, sometimes you all will ask, "Well, I'm happy to... What's it look like and what do you do with it? How's it work?" So tonight, we're going to give you a glimpse of data at the high school and give you some insight into exactly what you're looking at and what happens next. So with that, I'll turn it over to the high school description.
Thank you. The superintendent did ask to focus on how we make decisions about data and we're going to talk about how we do make decisions around individual students, but also how departments are making decisions, how we're making decisions school-wide. And just to provide a little bit of context to that conversation, we're really talking about this process of response to intervention. And so I just have a few slides to set up the context. RTI isn't only a student-by-student process. It really is a process where at the high school, we're using universal screening to really attempt to ensure that we're being successful with the most students that we possibly can be in our core curriculum. And when we see trends and patterns in the data, we try to address those. RTI at the high school is not just about forms because there's a great quote that you can either spend your time making a lot of forms or you can actually change things. And so that doesn't mean that we don't need a very accessible data system and one that is transparent and accurate. And we're going to show you that system that we have in place at the high school. It's not just about RTI-ing a student. It's really about creating a framework for prevention and putting in certain tier-one core educational strategies universally so that many kids respond well to it. This is really the definition of response to intervention. So we're really going to talk today. Mr. Costa will come up to talk about some of the high-quality core instructional practices that we're putting into place. And Ms. Bhutash will come up and talk about some of the tiered interventions that we have and that we're putting into place. This is the most familiar picture of RTI that you normally see. I have some problems with it when I look at it, so I don't use it often. But one of the misconceptions that you see in a picture like this is that RTI is only about interventions added on to what we're already doing. And people say, "Yeah, we're doing a bunch of stuff in the green, so we just need to add on a few interventions." And the problem is, is when the green and those core interventions or core instructional practices that we have at the high school are impacting in a positive way 80, 90% of our population, then they're really not doing what they are supposed to do. And so we need to take a look at that data. The other thing that you see there is that line down the middle in this picture. It's really hard to separate it to side levels, academic systems and behavioral systems, especially at a high school. Behavior could be because they have some skill deficiencies and they're struggling. And then academic issues could be because of certain behavioral issues. And so we really do merge those two at the high school. And so they really are now using that term multi-tiered systems of support. I like this picture the best to describe the RTI process. And if you look, it puts that database decision-making, which is what this presentation is all about, at the center. I would say when I came into Cumberland High School, there was some screening being done, there was some progress monitoring. And there were some interventions which they said, "Yeah, that's our multi-level prevention system. We're doing all that." But when you really dove down into the process, were they actually using and looking at the data in a systematic way to make the decisions around that? And that's the thing that we've been able to really start doing and bring into the high school. This is that classic problem solving. We identify a problem that we see in the data, we analyze it, we develop a plan, we implement it, and we evaluate that plan. You can do that at all sorts of levels, not only the individual student, but also department, grade level, and school-wide, including as a district. Algebra I, ninth grade achievement rates, it's really a pipeline that starts in kindergarten all the way through to ninth grade. And so how do we look at ensuring this process works throughout that pipeline? So my point of all this is how are we using data at CHS? The first step... Hold on one second. Ten-minute presentation of four hours. Our first step is really to focus on what we're calling a prevention framework. So those school-wide and department-wide practices and core instructional strategies. The reason for that is there's a lot of high schools right now that are struggling with RTI. And that's because they can screen the data and they have this way to identify problems. And all of a sudden, they say to themselves, "Oh, my God, we have 422 kids that are a problem and we need to individually deal with those 422 kids." And you're looking at our data up on the right-hand side of that, you notice that right now, our core green instructional program, where we have 73.4% of students with no failures. So we're not in that 80 to 90% range. And so we're trying to work at ensuring that there's a framework there that'll reach more kids. And if we had to deal with, on an individual basis, 26.6% of the students, not that we're doing, we are doing some of those individual interventions, but that would be quite overwhelming and it becomes top-heavy for a lot of schools. So we're really trying to work from the bottom up and reduce that number that have those failures. So the question really becomes for us, when you look at this slide, what do we have to do in our core? Because 89% is not successful in tier-one yet. And creating those systems is really a shared responsibility for everybody. So this is what RTI really is at the high school right now. I'm going to talk about the database decision-making part and show you the early warning system that we have. Mr. Costa is going to talk about the appropriate research-based core instructional strategies that we're putting into place. And then Ms. Bhutash will talk about the multi-level prevention systems that we're putting into place based on our universal screening. I want to take a quick break from the slide. If you can see the screen, we did scrub all the names and hid the names on this, but this is our early warning system at the high school. And it was developed to, by pulling information out of Aspen. This is what is called our user-defined cut points. So we establish certain cut points that if you look at course failures, somebody's in the green if they have zero course failures. They're in the yellow if they have greater than or equal to one. And they're in the red if they have greater than or equal to two. So we set cut points for various areas. Over on the right-hand side here on the screen, you can see that, I'm not going to press the button because it would reveal some confidential data, but we can click on an individual teacher, any teacher in the high school, and we can automatically see which students and in which grades failed their classes. And we'll talk about how interdisciplinary coordinators are using that data. If you look at the grade distribution at the high school, the thing that I point out is that after all the grade changes, the distribution is similar to what it has been. I would say this, the Fs, we looked at the data over the past four years. Four years ago, the failure rate was at 14.5% at the high school. This year, including incompletes, so Fs and incompletes were at 8.7%. So there's been, I think a lot of these interventions have started to work. You can then drive down into the failures. And on this slide, and anytime you want to come in and we can sit, or even at a Subcommittee meeting, if we really wanted to go through this in more detail, we could do that. We're able to slice through the data over here on this side and really filter down. But the thing I'd point out on this side is that you see in each grade level up on the left-hand side, the percent with no failures and then the percent with some failures. And you can see in ninth and 11th grade, it's higher than in other places for this first quarter. We tend to triangulate. We don't just look at academics, but we look at absences and tardies and also conduct data. This is our conduct data and our absence data. We're really doing well. And I think that has to do with PBIS and that type of school culture. We're really doing well in the conduct category. This is one of the documents that you have in that packet. I think it's number two. Conduct is doing excellently. You see 95.9% of kids that are in the green. We do see some places where we need to work, and that's at tardies and in absences at the high school. When we scrub out some of the kids that have medical excuses, that number gets a little bit better, but we do have to work at some absences. And when we look at absences and tardies, by the way, you can see the class that has the greatest difficulty getting to school. It's the senior class. And in the tardies, it's actually the same thing. There's 72% that are in the green. Everybody else is well into the 80s and 86s. So the thing that that does is I'm sure you're all thinking to yourself, "Well, we could do this, or we could do that, or we could do..." So the team gets together around this data, analyzes it, says, "Okay, we know and clearly can identify the problem. What type of intervention can we put in place to address that?" And then we see if that works. Conduct, again, look at the numbers on conduct. They're just tremendous. Certainly, school culture and I think the change in leadership structure at the high schools had a real big impact. This has a student column name list that is hidden, but you're able to look at each individual student. You're able to filter this in many different ways. Look at failures, absences, and conduct, and kneecaps scores all at the same time. This is a list for some of our unexcused absences and tardies and dismissals based on a new attendance policy. And I just want to show the last one. This is the one that you also have a picture of. I put a picture over the student's name and their ID number. But we can look up any student in the building right now, and we're able to take a look at who their guidance counselor is, whether or not they have an IEP. This student happens to have one failure. That failure is in science. They've had seven point five percent days absent. We're able to look at their kneecap scores over on the right. So we look at it globally, and it helps departments, it helps the school, and we can also look at it at the individual school level. So that was our early warning system. We do look at other data also, but for the sake of time, I'll bring up Mr. Costa to talk a little bit about, by looking at this data, what are the type of core instructional strategies we're trying to put in place?
So when we talk about instruction in the classroom, some of the things that we're trying to do, we're trying to incorporate some of those research-based best practices. So when you look at this, and we're asking every teacher in the building to post learning targets, to have bell ringer activities that engage our students immediately when they walk in the door, which will maximize the learning time. And then to do a closer activity to get the data that they need to measure whether or not students have learned the lesson for the day. We're also trying to implement a school-wide note-taking strategy, an interactive notebook, where again, those targets are revisited and those checks for understanding, they are right within the notebook. Along with the classroom instruction, we're also looking at multi-tiered systems that have been piloted over the last couple of years, are in place now, such as PBIS. When you look down below, numeracy and literacy, for example, there were art school kind of systems. Now we've kind of incorporated them into the ded. And just a couple of other things I want to point out. When you look at the bottom, the PSATs for tenth and eleventh graders, if you notice the last two rows on this screen right here, that juniors and sophomores who take the PSAT before taking the SAT do better than those who don't. Not only do they do better than those who don't, anywhere on that chart, you'll see that those students who have access to that test will do better. So we're looking at data that has been researched in. And then the other thing is, the check and connect is something that was started through PBIS, and those are for students, at-risk students. And if you look at this chart right here, and you look at each one of those risk factors, those are the levels of improvement among those students. So something like this would be something that we'd want to expand, maybe into advisory, and maybe have every student a part of the check and connect program.
So it's that check and connect program that we have, that we realized from the data that that was something that has been successful for our students. And so we're looking at things school-wide that can help the success of the school at large. Things, when we look at freshman teaming, we know that the freshmen are struggling. And so we're looking into different things to really help the freshmen in like teaming. And some of our larger policies like attendance. And we're also not focusing on the students that are struggling. We definitely want to focus on those that are doing, to be recognized, like the attendance recognition program and things of that nature, to really celebrate those successes. Other things that we're looking at from a school perspective are the guidance programming. We know, for example, that we want to increase the number of students that are attending four-year colleges. We've looked at that data. We have a plan in place. And our goal is to improve the four-year college attendance rate by this plan, which is to really just encourage students to apply to more colleges. The goal will be four colleges moving forward, to get them to apply to those colleges so that they can have those opportunities. So what we're really doing is taking the school-wide, taking a look at the school data, and then we're drilling down, and we're going smaller and smaller. And so one of the things that we're excited about is, we are really trying to identify, from a teacher perspective, we have the data, we've now gone to the level of the interdisciplinary coordinators, and they're really starting to do some more fact-finding. And so what they've been doing is they've been going to the teachers, and you'll see that, I think it's number four in your packet. And they've been going to the teachers, and they've been asking the teachers, okay, this is the list, these are the list of students failing. Let's try to identify why it is that they're failing. Do you feel as though? And then they're going through a checklist. Is it a skill deficit? Is it an organizational issue? Do they just lack the organization necessary? Is it that they're not engaged? And so we're really starting to drill down and come up with trends. We've piloted with the history and English teachers so far, and that pilot has shown us that it's actually a little bit surprising. Our original thought was, hey, maybe it's a skill deficit. Maybe they just don't have the skills necessary. But from the teacher perspective, we're finding other things, that it's engagement issues, and that the parental contact isn't there. So now we know, we have to identify ways that we can make sure that that parent contact is happening. And that's what we're looking to do as a school. There's another, it's number five in your packet as well. So once we've identified, we've even come up with cheat sheets for the interdisciplinary coordinators. So once we've said, if the teacher is concerned about organizational skills, what can we do? And we've come up with a now what type of scenario. And so we're really just looking to support teachers. Once you've identified those areas of need, what are we going to do about it? And we're really trying to build supports around that.
Thanks. So again, we do have to develop the school-wide department prevention practices before we really can dive down into that individual student-by-student process. Though that does happen at times, all the time, really. Guidance counselors, administrators, deans, we're always involved in that way. But we're trying to make sure our green area is really servicing eighty to ninety percent of students in a successful way. And they're all database decisions. Here are some areas of need, and some of them have financial implications. And I think some of this is what it takes to do it right. I think it is absolutely important that we have an RTI data coordinator. We are lucky enough to have Jim Alex, who spends a lot of time. He's our social worker that's split between the high school and the middle school. He's developing these systems at the middle school too, and he does an amazing job. But losing his knowledge around this would be difficult. And so an RTI data coordinator K through twelve would be an extremely good thing for the district. For the high school, we're involved in a study with the STAR assessment program right now, where we have gotten some materials free. But we need a universal screener for literacy, especially. We have it in math, but we need it in literacy for grades nine and ten. We really don't have another universal screener, other than the data on the early warning system that we're looking at. And so it's important. Luckily, next year, the eighth grade is all going to take the STAR assessment, so we'll have that data coming in. But it's really important for us, especially when it comes to kneecap and passing state assessments, that we can follow through with that ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade. We certainly want to transform and make a more personalized learning environment for the ninth graders. In that, we're going to bring a plan forward for that in the program of studies. We certainly need, I think, funding for some research-based math instruction PD. The numeracy teachers are doing a great job. They're relying a little too much on the STAR computerized program. It really needs to be a tool, and it really needs to be common core instructional practices that are guiding their daily activities in those classes. And so some work in the summer around that would be very beneficial for them. We have a hugely expanded two-to-four-thirty program. We have probably six different programs running at that time. Ideally, we'd love to see for some of our at-risk population, especially, some type of partnership that we're going to try and form with an organization that really can work with at-risk youth and somehow coordinate our after-school activities and programs. I think it's important for the entire high school to get assessment literacy training. Mr. Mitchell's been a leader in that thus far. Corrective reading is a tier-three strategy for some of our literacy students. It's a small group, but it does have a budgetary implication. We're looking at AP data. And when we look at that data, there are a lot of highlights that we see when we look at that data, but there are certainly some concerns that we have. We, you know, we're above the Rhode Island Global Mean Score in AP in six of our subjects, but in eleven, we were below that average mean score. There are a lot of great highlights. We were well above the mean score, almost doubling it in U.S. government politics, U.S. history, art history. And even though we were below the mean score in psychology, with the number of students taking AP psychology, their performance was really amazing in terms of the number of students that scored three, four, or five on that test. So there's a process now with the disciplinary coordinators to look at the AP scores and our five-year performance on AP and create a plan to make performance better. Our intervention classes right now are running extremely high, upwards of twenty-two kids at times. Ideally, we'd like twelve students in a literacy intervention and a numeracy intervention. We know that we can't maybe hit that, but we're running extremely high on that. And we're certainly looking at the possibilities when we look at our data and SAT scores and things like that, to maybe have a universal test prep program for the high school students, every high school student. And this is just the final thought. You know, I think the teachers, as well as the students, are working very hard. And I think we all go into teaching to make a significant difference for our students. And it really has nothing to do with any quick fixes or canned programs. It really is all about educators who generally care, coming together around common problems that are identified, and getting students to help themselves and also to create programs that they'll really benefit from. I want to thank, just from the data team and RTI team, Jim Field, Jim Alex, who really developed this early warning system, and is, I think, doing so partly for the Northern Rhode Island Collaborative. Tracy Ewick and Kristen Grimm, who are on our data team, Rhonda Dionne. And I can't say enough about our needs of discipline and our two new assistant principals. The ability to focus on academics, teaching, and learning, and the other side to focus on discipline has really made a huge difference for us in both areas. So that's all I have. And we'll take any questions if you have any.
Questions? You must have done a really great job. I have a question. How much of the programs that you presently have, you were here, you know, if you could say, we had this, and now we have this over the course of the last school year, or since your arrival?
Well, this slide here, we tried to break it out. So some of those were here, I'd say, before. I remember, 2012, 2013, a lot of those that we developed, and freshman mentoring and things like that have just really been unbelievable. And this is the... Where's the other one? This is what we're proposing and are merging now, as we continue to look at the data and continue to make things better. So we'll see these happen this year.
And where would you say is your biggest area of concern? Right now?
Right now, our biggest area of concern? I think, I think the ninth grade failure rate. We have to dramatically make that as close to zero as we possibly can. We need to create a really personalized learning environment where this RTI process, this process of looking at data and intervening, can be done in some sort of team fashion. It doesn't mean geographically, but there's the same four people that have common time, that can look at this data, they can flexibly use their time a little bit to provide interventions when they need it, provide some remedial time, provide time to push kids into distinction. So that, to me, is a key one that'll have an impact as we move forward with a lot of other things. So that's a big priority for us. It's persisted to that freshman rate, and we want to reduce it.
And is the, is kind of the return on that pretty immediate? So you're talking about kind of refocusing and refining these areas, you know. Often, what you see in education is they start out in kindergarten, and then by the time we, you know, get to high school, it should be fixed. And we know that realistically, that hasn't occurred. But can it be an immediate impact for an individual student so that they can really significantly increase their or lessen their failure rate or increase their performance?
I think so. You know, I think, as we're looking at different indicators, even like the initial data that we're getting on graduation rate and things like that, even though that cohort started in the 2009, 2010 year, last year's senior class, all indicators are starting to show that we're reversing the trend and we're starting to move upward. We're hoping that our BIS report comes back eventually. I don't know. They said the end of November, but we're well past that. And that, you know, our profile as a school, we saw a huge increase last year. We hope to continue to see that. So all the data points that we're looking at are certainly trending in a better direction. And so we think that it's working, and we want to get to that point where that yellow and red is really just five to fifteen percent of the population at the most.
And on the page that you had your wants, your wish list here, which one would... I know some of them have definite cost implications that are more significant than others.
Mr. Pignano, I think, said the entire slide at one point, but I don't know. But if I was to say, though, I think the data coordinator is huge. When we think of that pipeline, K through twelve, I think, especially now with a director of guidance that can maybe manage ILPs and intervention plans and articulate that type of process, I think the data coordinator is very big. The universal screener, the second one, is big. And then the third one. So I'd say the first three are really, and probably a commitment to trying to lower the class size and the intervention classes, those are the top four, I'd say.
Thanks. And from last year to this year, just as a point of comparison, how different is your discussion around data compared to last year?
Tremendously different. I mean, there's a lot more to saying, okay, here's the problem. Let's do this. Okay, it's fixed. You know, it's not like a factory line, and we fix this little problem, and the timings get better an hour later. I mean, figuring out how all the reports work and the processes work, and the decision-making, and who gets what, and who's going to deal with this, and who's going to deal with that. I mean, there's a lot of conversation, a lot of work around that. And we meet on a weekly basis around the data. And there's another meeting. One's about the quality of the data and ensuring this is as transparent and as accessible as we can have at the early warning system. And the other conversation is about analyzing that data and trying to figure out how we can create those preventive practices and processes, school-wide and department-wide. And so it's a lot of discussion that needs to go into something like that. It doesn't happen like this. A lot of training at times, too, even in just how to filter Excel. You know, so when different people get that, they need to know how to do those filters and not lose information. So even training like that.
And would you say that the leadership model has had a positive impact?
Tremendously positive. I mean, I can't speak enough about it. When a teacher is having identified... So the interdisciplinary coordinator, if they have a social studies and English teacher with them, and they identify the twenty kids that might be failing both their classes, and they share those kids, what can we possibly do to look at the data, why they're failing? If it's an organizational issue for fifty percent of the kids, or if it's an engagement issue for fifty percent of the kids? You have the ability of the deans, the assistant principal teacher learning to go and work with those teachers to improve those engagement strategies, and spend a lot of time in that classroom, and hopefully have an impact there, and provide feedback and observations. And, you know, they're not bogged down by discipline. And that's a big deal for them.
Dr. Thorne?
How do you rank high school star time on your wish list?
We'd always, I mean, it's an eight to twenty-point game. The research is pretty clear, but... On my wish list? Oh, I don't know. I have to think about it. I'll make a Santa wish list. I'll do that. But it's, I'd say it's pretty important. You know, we had eighty-six kids this year that we had to move around at the beginning of the year that had chosen to take an early bird class, even though we were starting later. But they wanted to take more EP and have different courses, but, you know, they couldn't because of that. So I think we have a lot of options, and it would have an impact on student achievement. So we're always forward.
You said eight to twenty point?
Yeah, eight to twenty.
Thank you. Mr. Thorne?
Madam Chair, I guess this would go to Dr. Thorne. Are we sharing the ninth grade data with the middle schools so they can understand what's happening with the old school coming up?
Yeah, the process has started. I mean, the idea that the early warning system will be consistent, six through twelve, too, will have a bigger impact this year. And there, we started to share data, especially last year, as students transitioned over. But there's real conversations that have to be had around, you know, expectations, maybe work together, six through twelve, to develop common assessments or expectations, or ensuring that that staircase of complexity, as they call it, the common core, is solid, and that both sides are clear about the expectations. But it's gotten a lot better.
Our transitions are mostly focused on students toward the high school. We haven't necessarily had the back-channel discussions, but we're both, both came into the schools at the same time. So we're still working out our systems at our schools, and we're not going to work in Russian and two together.
We're good. Thank you. That was very nice.
Thank you.
Next item, discussion under vote to approve communications coordinator agreement. Mr. Mutter, I believe you stated that this was in fiscal?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, it was in fiscal. It was passed Tuesday. And it was recommended by the fiscal management committee in a three-zero vote to recommend passage. This evening, the committee has received, based on some discussion we had this, that evening, did receive and is in their packet this evening, because this expenditure would require a budget amendment. And obviously, in the past, it's been my contention that you can't be asked to approve something that's in excess of the budget if you don't know where the remaining funds would come from. You would obligate yourself to that amount without knowing what the other change is going to be. So Mr. Pignano was kind enough to forward us this information, although it is not on the docket this evening. You can see... But you can see from the fiscal note that there would be, if you so chose, to approve this agreement in the amount of $12,000. Seventy-five hundred of that is currently in the budget, and the remaining forty-five hundred would come from a reduction in the, in the technology payroll, over there, forty-five hundred dollars. So, I know that everyone received that today, based on my request from Mr. Prignano. So, with that being said, I'm going to pass it.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Mutter and a second by Mr. Fiorello. Any further discussion? Dr. Thornton, do you see something else?
No, I just thought, I just was hoping someone was going to describe what I was saying.
Dr. Thornton, would you like to give us a few highlights of what the communication coordinator's position would be? I do know he's starting in January.
Yes, starting in January. I'll probably be meeting with him next week, Justin Martin. He will have experience from the public school side to the private school charter side to the police side. I think one of his first pieces is to see, you know, where we are as far as a base analysis, all the schools, in terms of websites, what we know about ourselves, and what our goals are, and we really go from there. He wants to, you know, see the principals, see the schools, see the PTO, see their websites, and really see what makes us tick. That's kind of the first mark.
Excellent. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries seven-zero. Next item, discussion and/or vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year.
I find approval as indicated.
We have a motion by Mr. Mutter, a second by Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries seven-zero. Next item on the agenda is discussion and/or vote to approve deleting the following policy II/IAA equipment, books, and materials. Mrs. Teal?
Thank you. This actually is a correction. We have voted to delete this policy, but I neglected to add selection of equipment, books, and materials. There were actually, I believe, three policies II/IAA. We are deleting them and combining them into one. This is the final one that just needs to be deleted so we get down to one policy. So, we agreed in some committees, this is the policy we want deleted. It should actually be called selection of equipment, books, and materials. And it was a three-to-zero vote to delete this policy. Again, under the correct name.
Thank you. Usually a paperclip above this would happen. Anyhow, okay, so are you moving passage?
I would like to move passage that we once again delete policy AA, or one-one, II, oh my lord, II/IAA, but it should be referred to as selection of equipment, books, and materials. That is the correct name you will find online.
Thank you. So, we have, Mrs. Teal moves passage of that policy. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Demonic. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Careful, next item. Please. Next item is a discussion and/or vote to approve amending the following policies. Would it be your pleasure that we do them all at once or individually?
It's a pleasure, the committee. I can explain them if you want, or we can take them all at once. They are all amendments to existing policies.
Folks? Thank you. So, we have DLC, employee expense reimbursements policy, GBAA, JFAA, sexual harassment policy, II-ICA, school-sponsored field trips of long durations, JBA, anti-bullying, teasing, and harassment policy, IKFC, high school proficiency-based. Do you have a motion? Motion to approve by Mr. Demonic. Second by Mr.? Yes, sir. Can we have a second first? Second by Mr. Duffy. Mr. Salvatore?
Thanks, ma'am chair. I believe the II-ICA is not up for approval. II-ICC.
I'm sorry. II-IC? II-ICA, school-sponsored field trips of long duration. We have a discussion whose additional language coming next. Thank you, Mr. Salvatore. So, we will remove II-ICA, and those are policy amendments. So, we have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Teal? Okay. Can I motion a second? All in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries seven-zero. Next item, discussion and/or vote to approve the following new policy, KDB, access to public records policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Salvatore. This is a new policy, obviously regarding access to public records. It brings us into compliance with all the laws and regulations. Because this is a policy in time of complacency, the first reading of the record.
So, we have a motion by Mrs. Teal and a second by Mr. Salvatore, access to public records policy. And is that available online? Do you know? We can put that online? It's just a reading? Okay. Thank you. So, we have a first reading of that. All right, so no vote taken?
Thanks very much. And I just think I'd like to say thanks so much for everyone who brought us on the policy. We got a lot of, it's been a good year, and the other day, and done a lot of, we're still ready to go.
Terrific. Thank you. Next item, personal recommendations. Mrs. Fogle?
So, I have a number of personal recommendations for the president. I'll start with, is a resignation. I request the advice consent of the school committee on the resignation of Christopher Skirka, boys indoor track assistant coach at Cumberland High School, effective November twentieth, twenty thirteen. Don't just go and do them all.
I'll take that. Great, thanks.
These are appointments. I request the advice consent of the school committee on the appointment of Matthew Campanelli, boys indoor track assistant coach at Cumberland High School, effective November twentieth, twenty thirteen. Wayne Keemond, custodian nights at the Wellness Center at Cumberland High School, effective November nineteenth, twenty thirteen. He's in his full time. He'll have a copay of thirteen percent, and his benefits are effective as of May first, twenty fourteen. William Keemond, custodian nights at Cumberland High School, effective November eighteenth, twenty thirteen. That information is safe for each of the custodians. Thirteen percent benefits are effective May first, May first, twenty fourteen. Christopher, and I always bash his name, so I'm sorry, Kubal, K-U-B-L-A-L, custodian nights at Cumberland High School, effective November eighteenth, twenty thirteen. Richard Maznick, custodian nights at Cumberland High School, effective November eighteenth, twenty thirteen. And Francisco Ray, custodian nights at BF Norton at Cumberland Hill Schools. He does a fifty-fifty split, four hours at each school, effective November eighteenth, twenty thirteen. Just as a note for the committee, these are positions that have long been unfilled at the, here at the high school. And we've worked out some issues with the non-certified human, and now we had been into the process and hired these. Now, our full staff custodian, it was. And then lastly, I have two days of absences. I request the advice consent of the school committee on the unpaid leave of Stephanie Amor, teacher assistant at Asher High School, effective January sixth, twenty fourteen. This is unpaid from April fourth of twenty fourteen. And lastly, the FMLA leave of Melissa Kuznick, English teacher at Cumberland High School, effective February third, twenty fourteen, with an expiration to return on April fourteenth, twenty fourteen.
Pleasure, the committee? Thank you, Mr. Mutter. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Thirty-seven-zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is school committee comments, school liaison reports. Anyone on the left? And anyone on the right? Mr. Duffy?
Just a couple of things. First, I just wanted to discuss the Hour of Code that I think is still going on this week in the schools. For those who don't know about the Hour of Code, it was created about five months ago. It's the idea of this organization. And luckily, the administration decided to jump on board when brought to their attention. And I believe every school was participating. I know I visited four different classrooms. And pretty much what it does, it puts kids in front of the computer, and they spend one hour of doing coding. It's age-appropriate, so I know we had some kindergartners doing it. I went to the middle school and the elementary school for different levels. Everything from Angry Birds, one, one where they were jumping over moon rocks on the moon and stuff. And they were all, the four different places I went to were all different environments. One was in a computer lab, one was in a classroom, one was in a library with the little netbooks. And the teachers had put a lot of work in to get this done, because this was curriculum that they didn't previously have. So, I just wanted to thank the administration for getting involved, the teachers for taking the time to learn it, to teach something that some of them might not have been comfortable teaching, and the students for taking the time to give it a try. Hopefully, this is just the first step in getting a little more involved in computer sciences in this district. A good taste of it. The second, I just wanted to thank the chair and others on the committee who recognized the need to offer the path we were on at Cumberland High School when we got us to standard-based grading. While I may not agree with everything that Lisa discussed as far as how we should like to see the policy changed, we do agree on the major focus on the change, which is to go back to traditional grading at Cumberland High School. Hopefully, we can find a consensus soon as a committee and move forward on it so that we can get back to the other issues like we discussed tonight at high school, partnership with Brown, we can move forward to have more teaching and learning. But thank you.
Anyone else? I had the opportunity to participate in the Hour of Code, and what I thought was most interesting as a programmer myself was the fact that the kids were talking about glitches. So, when something wouldn't work, they just kept saying, there's a glitch. And so, you had to ask them, what exactly do they mean by a glitch? And it was when they really couldn't get something to work. But what was interesting for me was that they were able to pick it up pretty quickly and understand what some of the different fundamental pieces of the programming concepts were. And I heard a statistic, and I know I'm going to misquote it, so I probably should just zip my lip. But basically, it said that the Hour of Code this week produced more participation in coding than the total years of public school students combined in coding. They really set quite the record, so that was pretty awesome. And thank you to everyone who made that happen. I think it was a great opportunity, and my little squirts who taught Legos with reminded me that I should probably get back into that. So, fun stuff. Anyhow, I think we do have executive session, Dr. Thornton?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. We have, I need a vote to go into executive session for discussion of items referred to in Rev. General Law, forty-two, forty-six, aye. And before going into the executive session, I will state for the record that any persons to be discussed pursuant to subsection one have been notified, and this statement shall be noted in the minutes of the meeting. Pleasure, the committee. Motion by Mr. Fiorello, second by Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries seven-zero. Thank you.